Good evening. I'd like to call the May 3rd Planning Board Meeting to order. The first thing on, well, first I'd like to welcome Charlotte Harris as a new member of our board. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks.
We appreciate you putting in the time. This is, see how you like it. It's a one-year deal for you, right? Now, when you can decide you like it, you can come back again, right?
That's the idea.
Okay. All right. And then, congratulations to the rest of us that were elected for three years, or condolebs, as one or the other. First thing on is minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of May 9th with the corrections requested by Ms. Kerfoot.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next thing is approval, not required, plans. There was two of them. I already put the first one away. What's the address? Oh, I got it right here. Applicant Judith and Lawrence Bond to adjust existing lot line on gunning point out.
I think it's really administrative matter. I don't think it's worth even talking about.
Well, we have to, it's a motion to endorse.
To endorse.
Is a proper.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That was a tough one.
Yeah, yeah.
For those of you who can't see it, it's a little teeny change in land above the side of a pinhead. The next one is applicant Laura McMahon and Carolyn Matzkin. Redefine property lines located at 141-487 Sandwich Road. This is a little bit more complicated, but has everyone had time to review it? Just giving her a chance.
Oh, excuse me.
This is your first one. I'm watching. Okay, you, oh, yeah, that's right. You went up and looked at it already with, okay.
So they're just moving.
Looking for a motion?
Move to endorse.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving right along. The next items are Planning Board Discussion. The first one coming up is a reorganization, reorganization of the board, and I would like to recognize Vice Chairman Kerfoot.
Well, I'd like to nominate Jim for chairman for the coming year. This will be his third consecutive term, and our Planning Board policy is that the chairman serve only two consecutive terms in a, you know, in a row like that. Consecutive is in a row. Unless we vote to set that aside. And so I would not only move that he, that I nominate him, but I need to move that we vote first to set that policy aside.
I'll second that.
You've got to call first.
I just have a question. That may be a policy, but it's not a requirement of the charter, as I understand it.
That is correct.
The charter requires, has turn limits, but has no indication of a chair.
That is correct, but we've always voted to set it aside so that we're not contravening our policy without acceptance that we are doing so.
At least we recognize that it's there. Can make a decision. Any other nominations?
Okay.
All those in favor? Oh, this is, this is for the change. Sorry. Just for the change.
For the change.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nomination.
Okay, I already nominated.
Okay.
Any other nominations?
I will second the nomination of James Fox as chairman.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Great. Thank you very much. I had, really enjoyed the challenge of the accessory apartment bylaw, and I'm looking forward to the Woods Hole, the Davis Straits project that we've already put a lot of time into. Now, we need a nomination for vice chair. I'll nominate Pat Kerfoot.
I'll second Pat Kerfoot.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
This is going pretty easy.
Yeah.
Clerk?
I'll nominate Paul one more time.
Second.
Oh, yeah.
I'll be pleased to continue as clerk.
Pleased to have you. All in favor?
Aye.
That's pretty easy now.
I'd like to add one other comment. Since Jim Fox got the most number of votes on the reelection, I think it's appropriate to be chairman.
Thanks. Well, I can tell you that I'm looking forward to it because I actually, through the tutelage of working with Pat, learned how to actually get things passed. So it, we have, it's, because it is a real challenge. I think that's a skill I learned with working with Pat, so, and the local comprehensive planning group and all the other things we did, so.
And I have to add, too, that you work really hard. I think you have an expertise in a lot of what we do. You're a student of the bylaws and zoning, and I think that shows in what you've done.
Thanks. We have a great board altogether. I really enjoy working with everybody all the way through.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that, in this whole reorg, that we open up the first 10 minutes of every meeting for public participation, because I can tell you during this campaign, one of the things I heard over and over again was, "We don't feel welcome at the Planning Board meetings," and I would like to give it a trial and see what happens and see if people come and see what they have to say, acknowledging that if it's on the agenda that people have the opportunity to speak. Clearly, if it's a public hearing, it's a different issue, and it would be noted on the agenda that it's a public hearing, but I would like people to believe that this is an open and fair process, and that if they have something to come and announce, or acknowledge, or invite us to, or whatever it might be, that we give it a shot like many other boards do.
I'll second.
A discussion on it? If you guys want it, it's fine with me. I feel that it takes away, I actually think it's unfair. I think it's a given, it's a chance for someone to come up and talk to us about an issue, and the other side doesn't know anything about it, and I think it's unfair to do that. I'm not even sure it's appropriate, but that's why I'm against it, because someone can come up and they can get in front of the board and present it, and there, somebody else that may be opposed to it doesn't know anything about that. So they have, but there is no debate, yeah.
There's no debate. If somebody can come and make a statement, it would be on the agenda, and I have to say, after nine years on the planning board prior to this, we did it for every meeting. And sometimes we had some public, you know, come. We had other boards that might show up to invite us to a meeting, to say they're concerned about something, and could we put something on the agenda for the next time, but I don't think there's anything to be fearful of or to be, you know, concerned about. I just, I think it's fair. I think it's an open meeting, and I think we should allow people. It's 10 minutes out of our meeting. If no one comes, we just move on with the meeting.
How about something a lot shorter than 10 minutes? That's a pretty long time. We normally don't, at town meeting, they only give it two minutes. I think that's a pretty long period of time. Would you accept a shorter time than that, or are you insisting on a 10 minutes?
I'm not going to insist. I'll go for seven. I mean, I, I want to be open and fair, and as I said, you know, I was involved in this campaign, and I had a campaign because I'm a newbie, and I sort of fell on my old experience and believe that it's the right thing to do. And I contacted 12 other communities. They all do the same thing for their planning boards, as well as other committees, so I would just like to give it a shot and see how it goes. Jim?
Yes.
Pam, since you said you've had experience with this, what are people going to talk about? What does your experience tell you?
So, this is, so.
Because we are the planning board. We're not an appeals board. We're not.
Right.
So what has your experience told you that people would want to talk about?
So I can tell you that after nine years on another planning board, I would say 60% of the time, there would be someone that would come and would say, "I'm here representing such and such an entity or a subcommittee. I would like to invite you all to our next meeting," or, "I have an issue that I would like to discuss. I understand I can't discuss it now because of open meeting law. It's not on the agenda, but I implore you to put this on your agenda for the next meeting." Any number of things.
Those things are important enough. Couldn't they just send a letter and ask for it?
But then you're shutting people out of the process. If, if there's no opportunity for people to come and speak.
Except, I disagree with you. I don't think it's an opportunity for people to come and discuss anything that's going on in town. I think that we have a job to do with, we have an agenda, we have people that are paying lawyers, fees, everything, and everything spelled out, and we prepare for them. I read these minutes. I, I know what's coming up. I prepare for the meetings, and I think if somebody wants to get on our agenda, they simply have to send a letter and get, ask to be on the agenda. That's all it is. We're not shutting them out, and they could do it in writing. It would be more formal. And I think sometimes when people do it in writing, their plans are better thought than just come out and speaking extemporaneously about something. So I disagree, and I myself, if I did it, I would, I really think it should be like two minutes, but I don't like it at all, but.
You're talking about a two-minute limit per person?
Per person, yeah.
Okay. You've got a two-minute limit, and that's fine.
No. If we have 10 people, we'll go, but we don't, and we won't.
No, we won't.
So, I mean, if you, if you all feel strongly about it, I'll go along with you, but I'd like to limit it to two minutes. Yes.
So, can I ask Mr. Curry about his experience?
Please do.
Do you have people that, do you have people that come to your office and, and make these types of requests, like we feel that we're not being heard, or can we be on your agenda and they don't get on the agenda, or?
Well, thank you for including me in the board's discussion, but I try to not involve myself in what literally is a policy level of discussion. I can't tell you that. They can't talk to you about something that might be in front of you.
Right.
Not currently, but that might be coming your way. So you have to be very careful.
Right.
So how do we know that?
If someone wants to, or that you would have.
That's the first question that was asked.
You, you would have to, if someone wanted to talk to you about something on the horizon that's coming your way.
Oh, you, so it would be something visibly on the horizon, something, because something could show up the next day.
Something that might show up the next day. You have to be very careful, because, you know, you do issue permits. You're a permit board. So public comments, good. It's okay. You should actually be discussing this under future agenda items, not board of the organization, but it might come to show up in discussion. You just have to be very careful, because there are always those people who will try to influence your thinking on something that could be adjudicatory for the board. That's my caution to the board. Otherwise, you can't really get hurt. It's two minutes.
Paul?
I'm a little conflicted by this, because, well, it's appropriate to have openness with the public, and I would welcome that. I have not heard anyone say they haven't had a chance to come before the planning board, they haven't had an issue raised, so I don't know if it's a real problem or not, and we're addressing a perceived problem. I don't know of anyone who said, "Yeah, it can't be heard." If there is an issue, they should come on the, should go put it on the agenda, but what, what a selectmen do is, they sit there and they listen and don't say a word. That's all they do. In fact, last week, I raised an issue in my neighborhood as a town meeting member, and they sat there, looked at me, and went on, and I wasn't sure they heard me, frankly, but the town manager came up a couple of days later and said, "Oh, I followed up on it," and it was helpful. But I'm not sure we have a problem now, and maybe the thing to do would be to try this on a month or two basis and see if it works. If nobody shows up, nobody has any questions, we can go on from there.
So I'm going to modify and just say, could we do it for six months, see what happens, and if we don't have anybody, or nobody has any issues, or we don't hear from anybody? But at least I'd like to give it a fair shot. I mean, not, it's not fair for two months during the summer, because a lot of people aren't here.
So it's, the request is for, do it for six months, for two minutes per person, and no more than 10 minutes overall, in case we get a line of 20 people that want to do it.
That's not going to happen, though.
So that's a motion?
Yeah, it was, well, it was a motion. I made it, you seconded.
It might be amendment to your mo, the original motion.
They, why are we, any amendments?
I think that was an amendment to the original motion.
Amendment, right. Right. So we're just accepting the amendment?
There would be 10 minutes, no more than two minutes per?
Per person.
Person.
Yep.
And try for six months.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, that would be fine. I mean, it's second, if it has to be seconded.
It's been seconded.
Okay.
For discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to do it.
Okay. Woods Hole.
Woods Hole Historic District Planning Project.
You have a scoop of work in your agenda package. I'll let Cory speak to, speak to this. He's the first to nominate.
I read it carefully. I had only one question and one word that I wanted to make sure. It talked about uses also.
Yes, there's uses. I'll let Cory say.
Okay. I just, I mean, I mean, I understand historic buildings and, you know, the views, but uses was like, that means they're going to be saying what goes on inside the buildings as well?
No.
No? Isn't that what use means?
No. Zone, whatever is allowed by zone.
Well, this, I saw the word use in the, in the paragraph.
Where are you, Jim?
In this Woods Hole project. I read it carefully, and I just focus on.
Something else, this is Woods Hole.
Why don't you go on with your presentation, and I'll find the word.
Well, I really don't like the presentation. I'd actually liked to have heard of Pat and say, "Talk about what was discussed in the LCP meeting with, and had added in the proposal in reference to the project," because I wasn't there at the LCP meeting, but just kind of giving an overview of what was said and.
Okay. I think I did that at one time already, so I'll simply try to repeat myself, is that there is a lot of pressure in Woods Hole currently with redevelopment of properties or development of properties that will impinge upon the character, or could impinge upon the character of Woods Hole. There's the Episcopal Church there, there's the Fisher House, there's the dome property. Those are the ones that are most, in my mind, there may be others as well.
Winding Lane?
Yep. Winding Lane, another one. You're right. So the idea is only some of these are in the historic district, which you can't really see very well on this map. You kind of can. I had a color map, which made it far more definitive and easier to see. So the study area will encompass some properties that are not in the historic areas, just like when we talked about Davis Straits. They spread a little bit of field, because that's really part of Woods Hole. What they intend to do is to study it, much like Davis Straits, to get the people involved in Woods Hole, to hear their comments on it, to, my understanding is, to do examples of what could be. So some of it is almost form-based that we've been looking at or talking about, and get the public comment on it, then put together a report, much like we have for Davis Straits. And you can see the schedule in the back. They are supposed to have started it in May. I don't know whether this is going to sign yet or not, but I know they're going ahead and doing some of the original background work. And they have four different tasks here, and there will be a final report, much as we got for Davis Straits. Now, I would hope, and I believe I expressed it, and I think Pam was on board with that, too, that as a result of this study, some kind of final plan could be put together for Woods Hole that would indicate how they want to go in Woods Hole. There would be all the public input, there would be special interest inputs, and they, it might be wise to have a planning board representative, not necessarily to sit in and participate, although that could be open, but to, excuse me, to hear what is going on and bring the report back to our board, so that we are fully cognizant as the process goes along as to what is going on. I'm assuming, Cory, that you will be sitting in on this, too, or is that incorrect?
Yep.
Okay, so we would, being the representative, to sit in and bring it back to the board.
I had a question on the map. Are they really proposing changing the district, like cutting off one end and moving it over the other? I mean, they're showing it going across the canal and further into the town of Woods Hole, which is currently not in the district, and they're taking, it looks like they're cutting off the end that's closer down the beach.
That would be presuming.
Well, that's what, that's what seems.
Well, you know what's interesting, Jim, is as we drove around, there are some homes that are half in the historic district and half of them aren't in the historic district, and I think they want to clean it up as well, to make sure that there are, the lines are more defined.
Oh, I understand that. But so they're not proposing to go deeper into Woods Hole. They're not moving this line, is what you're saying?
I don't currently.
No, we're, I'm just.
They're going to reassess district boundaries in the presentations, but overall, not, they're not looking to change the extent of the district in terms of the size.
Okay, then I was just misled by it. And I did find the word use in the task number two, first paragraph. It goes on to say that they're going to be addressing building heights, scale, as well as various uses. So they're, they're, that means they're going to be, could be considering what uses can actually happen in a historic district. Is that what that says?
That potentially.
We have the chair of the historic.
No, I, I, I know the language, though. I know what the use means.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Zoning, I understand it.
If we need clarification, we have the chair of the historic district.
I'm looking at the words. I, I just wanted to point that out, that this, we should watch that carefully.
If I could just add a little clarity there. Anything that implicates a use, whether in a zoning district, or a historic district, or whatever it might be, you just go back to town meeting, it needs a report of the planning board, which is why I think it's important the planning board be part of this process, because if there are use implications, if they do evolve from the study, you're up to speed, but they still have to come back to the planning board at town meeting.
Okay. Because I agree with all the other things. I'm just not sure I want to.
You can't, you can't, you can't change the uses in a historic district bylaw. You have to come back with a zoning bylaw.
Okay.
But I think it's important that that be realized, and I think it's important to get looked at, too.
I think it's, I'm thinking, I would actually like them to see, go more towards form-based zoning and not paying attention to what the uses are in the building, and looking more at the structure, how they sit on the ground, and how they look, and not what people are doing inside the buildings. I think that's.
Yeah, let's see what.
I think that's, that's what I thought of. I thought it seemed like it was going a little bit away from the direction that we were talking about with form-based zoning when they implied that, but we'll deal with it when it comes around.
Let's see what comes up.
I think just like Davis Straits, we didn't know what to expect. We gave input, and throughout that report, we saw our input come forth very strongly, so they were definitely listening, and I thought that was an absolutely brilliant report that we got. I would expect something very similar for Woods Hole. And a lot of it may have to do with planning board input, too, in terms of zoning. I don't know. We can see, because as Pam was saying, the split lots, so.
Well, that happens all over town, not just Woods Hole. That's, that's a fault with all the districts.
Exactly.
Okay. So.
Jim, I have a.
Yes, go ahead.
This couple of work gives a lot of responsibility to Mr. Pacheco, and one of the things it does is, when you go through it, it talks about certain boards in town and others in town, and for example, it doesn't mention Historical Commission until they get to a review, and it's only the chair. You know, the Historical Commission may want to have a bigger role in doing some of this. Plus, there are groups in Woods Hole, aside from the public, that are very active, business community down there, is very active at doing certain things, and I think by leaving it so vague that other groups, it kind of puts a burden not only on the coordinator, but also kind of excludes some people that may want to include forever on. You know, maybe the intent of this on purpose is he can invite whoever he wants, and that's probably part of it, but I think there's a lot of people who would be very interested in participating in this before you get to the public hearing. As you develop the regulations and other facilities, they may want to have more information on that. And as I read through it, it talks about properties within and without the district, and somehow we have to deal with what that means, too, because not every building in Woods Hole, it's initially the buildings in, within the historic district. And as they realign those districts, because years ago, they just put a felt tip along somewhere, and it doesn't really follow property lines anyway, so I think they have to look at that more carefully, and I'm sure they will, but it, to me, it leaves a little, a little vague about who's going to be involved in some of this, and I think it's a very important study to be done. I think there's, people out there can help a great deal.
Well, the Historical Commission will be involved in every step of the way, working with the commission, and also myself. Vice Chairman, the proposal has been working with keep, keep going in Woods Hole to get them ready for the study and ready for the public participation process.
Well, this is like a little bit before. I mean, we already have the Davis Straits tool already done, and we're still going to have an awful lot of public outreach and discussion and stakeholders meetings and everything. This is really just laying the groundwork for the real work that comes when, when we decide to start moving forward on some of these ideas. This is really just a collection of the ideas, is that correct?
That's exactly right.
So I'm, I think we've already analyzed it too hard already.
Yeah, it's essentially existing conditions, looking at zoning, and really trying to reinforce village character, and looking at the land use, and seeing if the clash of village character and what the historic districts do, and what current zoning does, and just an assessment of that, and also some pedestrian and some bike, bikers, and also view shed.
Like traffic mitigation.
Could you define view shed for me?
Like from Woods Hole Road, looking out to Little Harbor, certain, certain view shed of the ocean.
Like a watershed, you're saying it's.
Yeah, watershed. That's, that's important for the character of Woods Hole.
Jim?
Yes?
One other issue that's not mentioned here. It's a big elephant in the room in Woods Hole, clearly, it's a steamship authority, and they're not mentioned in here, and obviously, they have plans, they're doing certain things down there that we can't stop, even if we want to do, but I think there has to be some kind of discussion on what their plans are, what they're trying to do, to try to list what they're attempting to do in Woods Hole, because that's been a source of friction in Woods Hole for a long time, and I think we just got to face the fact that they are doing work down there, and they're doing the best they can, but we need to know what that is, so we plan around it. So I think that element has to be addressed here as well.
Any more discussion? We're not going to have a vote or anything else. Everybody else up with this?
Somebody worked very hard on it.
Oh, yeah.
Cory. Corey.
It's on the agenda, if, it's going to, do you have anything new to add to this?
I have some points of clarification. If you have any to share with you, I need to get up.
Yes, you do, you need to come to the microphone.
Mr. Public Hearing?
No, but my vice chair and some of the other people have requested that part of the discussion, we listen to what Nicole has for us.
I'll make it quick. I did want to clarify for you with regard to your question about the boundaries and if it's going to extend the historic district. Actually, I believe in the long run, it may, if anything, throw a few properties off of the historic district. We're not going deeper into the area, but this issue with boundaries is a real issue with the inconsistency throughout town, where as Mr. Dryer pointed out, it was a magic marker approach, some fell in, some didn't fall in, and what the study is going to look at is what I call the gateway to Woods Hole, so it's really coming into the town, how do we maintain that character? So, in addition to the properties that you cited, we also have the Coast Guard undergoing a major redesign of their campus, steamship authority, as you pointed out. Also, Woods Hole Oceanographic is going to be looking at their Island Dock, and when they look at their Island Dock, they're going to be reorganizing activities that are on that dock, moving them into their village campus and to the Quissette campus, so there's going to be a lot of reorganization. They just got a major grant to do a feasibility study, so that's going to impact the village.
Aren't they also exempted?
Exempt, they may be exempt, but it's going to impact the village. So, that's what we're just talking about, all these moving pieces. And what the Historical Commission is trying to achieve is not to have to look at projects in isolation that come up to us one at a time, we're trying to look at this in the broad picture. So, that's, that's really the, the goal, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions to, to, you know, you know...
No, I think you're not planning to go over the, over the drawbridge then?
We are not planning to extend the historic district. I mean, we, who, I can't imagine what, that the Cape Cod Commission will come up with that recommendation. There are many reasons why that is not the case. We're not looking to extend at this time, but realize also that there are different setbacks from the historic line in Woods Hole than there are in Falmouth Center, than there are in West Falmouth, et cetera, et cetera. So, we'd like to be able to make more uniformity around town, so it's, there's a fairness issue, as well as other issues where we have properties that are in the front that historic street addresses, where buildings are in the back of a property, they're not protected, and, and we've seen some, some impacts with regard to development about that. The other thing is, is that once we do this study with Woods Hole, it'll give us a template to work with the other villages, and I think that's what's important. So, this is a long-term plan to do the study right, figure out what can be implemented, move forward through town. It's good planning, it's also been recommended on the LCP.
I have one comment that, it was very well expressed by Nicole, but it's also that when you get a template, as she called it, you have a little bit more clout to keep your desires in front of the whole, of the town and the village and the entities that are planning to do work there. You can say, well, this is what we'd like to see, and it has been accepted. And I think that's a very critical part of what I hope will come out of the commission's study, and that will be emphasized by, I'd like to call it a work plan or a master plan or whatever, for the Woods Hole area.
Right, and just to address Mr. Dryer's comment before about the other associations, the Woods Hole Community Association is engaged in this process at this point, the Business Association as well, they're all very eager to see it, and we're putting together a committee, a smaller committee in town, so that the Cape Cod Commission doesn't have to be working with everybody, but they do have public process in this. And, and like you said, Pat, it's, it's a rationale that we'll get, that we can move forward with in the other villages.
So, but for people at home, okay, this is just the beginning, this is a study that they're bringing forward, okay? There'll be discussions at, at the historic boards all the time, there'll be discussions here, then, then it actually becomes a warrant article, and it goes to town meeting, and there'll be a huge discussion there, so nothing's being changed. This is to put together a list of recommendations that come back to both boards, then to this board crafting it for town meeting on a warrant article, and then requires two-thirds vote at town meeting. So, that's the whole process, so it's not like we're just going to change everything with a small group of people.
No, no.
I didn't want people to miss, understood.
Hopefully, you walk in altogether?
Yeah.
Correct, that's the intention.
There you go.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Giving Cape Cod Commission money to good use.
Yeah, and that's really the, the important, yes, John?
I was just going to say, I think the reach out to those other committees is going to be the responsibility of project coordinator. That's what he's doing, and that's what he needs to do, and I'm sure he's able to do that. So, it's not isolating anyone, it's just incorporating them to participate in that role of project coordinator.
They'll be having the hearings primarily, we'll have one or two hearings, they'll have many, like over. John, another one?
My question is that, what happens if a property is not in a historic district, and there's a redesign, and then it is included in the historic district? What happens to that property owner? Is there a time period before they have to, to meet all of the historic guidelines?
No, everything's, it's when the changes knew.
Is there an appeal period, or if they, they don't want to be in it, or?
Well, yeah, that all happens town meeting floor. I mean, you can, they can oppose, I mean, they try, it was tried at Falmouth Heights about 10 years ago, and they had a vote, they had an election, a vote, didn't pass. People at Falmouth Heights didn't want it.
We're starting to get in the weeds.
Yeah, we are.
Because this is about...
Yeah, we're getting too deep.
Talking about a study that's being proposed, and we like it, so, okay, let's, let's move on. And all these other things will come up with the process that they'll be going through. So, I, if it's as good as the Davis Straits study, I think we're, we're looking forward to it.
I think one advantage is the timeline is short one. See, by the end of the year, and I think that's important.
Next item is create the Davis Straits Working Group. Bylaw restructuring, well, that's a heavy one.
So, you want to lead us through this one, Brian? In your package, you'll have a couple of examples of what the consultants have been working on for the last couple of months with the staff in restructuring the zoning bylaw. And I thought it was a good time to bring it out to the public eye in front of this board and the Board of Appeals. And it's really sort of a fundamental question that the board, this board needs to answer together with the zoning board, on the same page, about how the skeleton of this bylaw will be structured. Because we're going to hang everything on this skeleton, you know, that's what, meat on the bones, will be what you see in front of you. And there are various examples that they have come up with for your consideration. I'm not asking for the board to decide anything tonight, it's more of a homework assignment and a discussion perhaps more in-depth at your next meeting about what that form, and I think there's also some examples from Berlin, Connecticut, I'm going to be, either I've given you or I'm going to give you, from other towns that they've been working in. A little history, this was an article that came to town meeting a few years ago. I think they asked for $50,000, I think they got $35,000. He started with General Code Publishing, they did somewhat of an editorial analysis of the zoning bylaw. From the editorial analysis, we hired Mr. Bob Mitchell and Mr. Bob Ritchie. I refer to them as Bob and Bob, or Bob Square, just for simplicity, Bob Square. Bob Ritchie is the former Assistant Attorney General of Municipal Law Unit for many years, and Bob Mitchell worked for the city, the town of Amherst, Massachusetts for many years, is now a private consultant, and they're your consultants. And they've come up with this sort of form for you to consider. Essentially tries to group things logically in the same place, so you can pick up the bylaw, I'm Joe Public, and I want to find out what's in a residential zone, and you can go right there and find it. And there is various examples in there. Take a look, Tadla Kazo, you know, I'm not going to tell you what I think is good, because I want to hear from you what you think is good, because you're the ones who have to use it, and the public that has to use it. Us technocrats can muddle through, you know, the arcane stuff. So, it's more of a homework assignment, if you have any initial impressions, you know, share them with the board, but I'd like to come back at your next meeting for, for a discussion and hopefully a decision, because I'd like to ramp this up a bit. Not so much for articles for the November town meeting, but I want them to start really putting this together so we can show town meeting what's coming down the road in November. I think this should be one of those article two reports, because I wouldn't want to just land this on them, because it's quite a significant change. And the last time we did this, or last time the town did this, Jimmy Carter was in the White House. So, you know, we know who Jimmy Carter was. You guys know who Jimmy Carter was?
Right, were you glad to complain of that?
He wasn't born at the time.
He was the peanut department guy. But that was a long time, it was 1979, and so that's quite some time ago that this, we went through this process. So, if any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but essentially, take a look, what looks, what the form that you would prefer as, as the reader, and then hopefully a vote of the board, that coincides with the vote of the zoning board, because I want them, I want you two boards to be in agreement, because they're the two boards that use this the most.
Paul?
One of the problems we have is not only the organization which they're addressing here, but also the conflicts between them. There's a lot of real issues that, and one bylaw says nothing, another bylaw says something totally different, and that has to be cleaned up, obviously. But these people are obviously very experienced in with this kind of framework. Do they have an example of where they've done this before that we can look at what a result would be? Is there something we can look at, excerpts from a...
Yes, it'll be Berlin, Connecticut, that's where they just finished one up.
Can you provide excerpts of that?
Yep, that's on the way.
So, we could, it's on whose way?
I thought I had already sent it, but apparently I hadn't. Examples of finished products. And I'll send you Berlin, Connecticut.
Did you say you sent it out to us?
Obviously, I didn't. I did not. I did not send it out, but I will, I'm sorry.
It would be helpful to see where they're going, at least a couple of sections, maybe.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I think it would be good, Brian, if you could call out two or three examples of how things are going to change, how some issues are handled in four different parts of the bylaw, you know, that you got to repeat, you got to jump from one page to another, and say, this'll shuffle that.
Right, that's, that's coming down the road. We're a couple, we're maybe one or two steps back, that, you know, how we, how we structure it will determine how many things sort of get tossed out, but you're right, we have single-family dwelling, we have single-family housing, we have single-family unit, you know, we want...
Consistency.
One, so some things, those are the more substantive things that town meeting will see more likely in April of next, of each, November will be, the train's coming down the track, there's a report, same thing we do with the accessory department bylaw, sort of, you know, easy to...
A report in November and hopefully a vote in April, is what you're saying?
Correct. And then, and mostly on structure and getting rid of some of the things that are so obvious. And then, we're going to get into, this will be a five, I, I said five years, we started this about two years ago. So, it'll probably be six town meetings, and you will probably see then, not a finished project, it's never really finished, but you'll see the, the end result of your efforts.
So, there won't be an omnibus vote on the bylaw change? It's, it's going to be article by article?
I don't know about you, if I'm a town meeting member, and I see the old bylaw, here's a new bylaw, you couldn't possibly do it in one town meeting. So, you're looking at several town meetings, and I think if you do incremental, we're changing the structure, but nothing too substantive. Now, we're changing the uses that are in these districts, now we're changing how this works, I think ramp it up. That's the way to go. But it'll take probably three years, six town meetings. That's, at least that's my estimate.
And so, then the processes will be the same as always, we'll, we'll be having hearings, discussions, just like we do on any, for each one of those, so we'll be...
Because there are some uses in these districts that you may want to remove.
So, there will be, there could be possible debate on everything.
There could be debate. There are special permits that are issued by the board of select that were developed in the 60s, but docks appears and floats. When there were no conservation commissions, conservation commissions came in in the 70s. But we still have the 60s vestige permits, zoning permits for docks. There's a real substantive question. Do you want to reside it with the conservation commission? Do you want to take it out of zoning? Some things we talked about with flood zones. Those are the real questions that people may just say, well, wait a minute, you did that back many years ago, and town meeting voted not to take it out, but it must have been 20 years ago now. Those are the real harder questions, I think, that are going to be coming down, maybe years, year one, two, three. The first one is new structure, nothing really terribly different, we'll get rid of some dead wood. No one has a natural ice harvesting activity that I'm aware of. And the head of Unshurvix planted it in 20s and 30s.
But it's an historic operation.
If, if someone wants to bring one back, well, I'll call that a process, or retail sales, but, you know, we still have those vestiges from the 20s and 30s in the bylaw. And some of those things I think will be relatively easy to discard, others will be more complicated. You still allow airports of what are essentially residential zones. So, if you want to have a helipad, the door is open to at least apply, you can have one. So, those are the types of questions that will come down in years to it.
Pam?
Is there any thought of prioritizing things that we know are really critical, i.e. coastal resiliency and building permits and a change to the site distance from the waterline, for example? I mean, I think if there's a way to somehow coordinate some of the things that are more critical than...
I think as, as things evolve, if the policy of the town for resiliency is going to be retreat, that has to be determined still. If it is going to be retreat, is 50 feet enough, or 35 feet, which is what we have today? So, those are critical questions that are going to be parallel with what's going on here, because we have the new committee about resiliency, and some of the vulnerability assessments are going to be coming out, and that, and the policy question of reinforce or retreat is going to be very important. Short term, no. Right now, we have this, you know, elevation three, you have to be 50 foot setback from mean sea, elevation three. We might change it from the vertical datum of 1929 to the vertical datum of 1988, that type of technical stuff, but no substantive change first year. It's in, it's on the radar screen about resiliency and town policies about retreat. Or reinforce it.
When I was looking at this, the framework made a lot of sense to me, but what didn't make sense to me is knowing our current bylaw, and we have all of the districts, the residential, the business, and the industrial uses, and overlay districts. Then, a lot of these other things refer back into these districts in various ways. How will that functionally hang off that tree?
I think right now, we have like the uses and the bench little stuff all kind of mixed together with definitions, so they'll sort of be separated out, and you're going to have a matrix. So, in a business redevelopment district, you know, business one district, you'll, you'll have the uses, I'm going to say you'll have some of your districts up here, and your uses over there, and a little checkbox, you know, by right, special permit, not allowed. I think that's how we're going, that's in the works, it'll be, it'll be a matrix instead of, you open it up, and you have this whole menagerie.
So, it's like a crypt sheet?
Right.
Okay.
But it's, it's going to be a huge crypt sheet.
I like crypt sheet better.
Well, it's going to be a very large matrix, so somewhere along the line, a decision's going to have to be made, do we really need to have natural ice harvesting activities in, in residential zones? You know, you see what I'm saying, that's a, that's one of those examples. You know, you see what I'm saying, that's one of those examples. And that matrix will shrink. That's how, that's what we envision.
Then you would look at that for residential districts, and you see what all these other things apply.
Right. And then, you know, I think we may start with definitions, because there are some definitions for kennels. We don't allow kennels in town, why do we have a definition? So, like I said, it'll be a very iterative process, but the fundamental beginning is the structure. And how it all fits together from there is what you will decide, the consultants, okay, here's the structure we want you to pursue. Very fundamental and important question. So take a look at it, take your time, take a look at it, discuss it as a board, come back and we accept, we'll accept your guidance for our actions.
This is a big challenge, this is going to keep us real busy for the next three years. Because we'll be having new, basically, in essence, every new zoning, every article is going to be discussed, reviewed.
You can bring in omnibus change in if you want.
No, no, I don't want to, I just wanted to make sure everyone understands that this is, this is, we're going to be spending half our time, I might have to cut those one down to one minute, we're going to be busy.
Hopefully, we'll have a, it'll be slow, but it'll start ramping up, and I think, you know, three years is my estimate at this point. It just depends on, you know, the reception out there, and how well it's communicated, what makes sense to people. I have, I don't see anybody really getting too upset about some of the fundamental structure changes, because it's going to be easier to read and understand, which was the fundamental, number one thing was make it more user-friendly and readable. It may not make a lot of sense in some instances, because, you know, well, what's this, what's that, and why do we have ice harvesting? I don't have an ice box anymore. But it's easy to read. That's where we're starting.
That's a good question. Brian, is Berlin, Connecticut a coastal community?
It's probably near Hartford or New Haven.
Is that like Duck and Run?
I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, I'd like to think that anything that we're modeling after is a community that has some similarities to Falmouth in terms of its coastal.
Oh, I see, well, yeah, for the, more for the form and the structure, not for the actual dimensional requirements.
Oh, no, not for the dimensional.
No, we're just looking at, here's the form used in Berlin, Connecticut, for their purposes. This is a form that looks good, so we might use here for our purposes. But the actual nitty-gritty stuff is, we're not modeling that up to any town, we're modeling that for what this town, this town needs.
That's what we did with the LCP, we used Citi Lowals for our model.
That's exactly, exactly, a good analogy, Bob. Perfect.
So Pam, active wouldn't be very good for us then either, because we're a.
I'm not even bringing that up, Jim.
I was joking.
It's landlocked. We're a landlocked community back there.
So.
I saw a hand out here.
Are there other boards going to be participating in this exercise?
ZBA for sure.
Right now, it's the Board of Appeals.
So the two boards?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. I mean, other boards are free to take a look, but those are the two boards that it's been sent to, and my understanding is, we gave it to the Board of Appeals a week or so ago, and take a look, and hopefully, independently, you come up with the same idea. If not, they'll have a little conference. So take a peek, and off we go. So this is, it's.
We set to move on here, everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. Create the Davis Straits working group. O'Brien and I met with Michael Kasparian a few weeks ago to lay the groundwork for it. We didn't do it until we had, have brought it to this board. But we were going to reach out to first having all the property owners in Davis Straits invited to a stakeholders' meeting, and hopefully have some from the Cape Cod Commission there too, and give the same presentation they gave us, but to the property owners, and then to get their feedback. And, but we'll be reaching out to other, we want to have a working group, I don't have to decide on the size, but it's going to be a lot more than two, but it'll be probably less than 10. What's the right-size group, Brian, you think, for these things?
Five to seven.
Five to seven?
Worker bees.
Right.
Worker bees. So my thought was two planning board members as part of this group, together with the Chamber of Property Owners, other town boards that are implicated by some of the changes that are going to happen down there, maybe a conservation commission layers on, because there are flood zone issues down there. So somewhat of a small working group, very similar to the coastal resiliency group, there's five.
Do you think there should be a CPC and 300 community person also?
I think there's stakeholders, I think.
Okay.
As evolves.
So they'll be part of it anyway.
You want to bring them in, but I think at this point, you have your, you have the study, you want to bring in the people who own property in the area, tell them what's on your minds. And we're essentially following the same formula we used on East Main Street. Because they, obviously, are stakeholders, and interest in their property.
So I've already proposed myself for this, for one of these positions. Anybody else? We need another one. You're already doing the woods hole, you're all set for two?
Sure.
Well, there's more things to do. Anybody else? John? So, well, we have three people for two here.
I'm also a property owner.
So you're already a part of it.
So we get two for one with John?
We get two for one with John, no. Well, all the property owners will always be invited, John, so would that, would that satisfy you?
Sure.
And you, and actually, you could come too, because there's only three of it, if there's just three of us there, it's not really a committee, right? Or is it, Brian? Do we have a subcommittee problem with three?
Well, if you vote a subcommittee there, you're subject to the open meeting.
No, we're not going to vote a subcommittee, we're going to call it a working group.
Essentially, someone who will go and sit on behalf of the board, but you're not going to be.
Voting anything, everything would come back to the board.
You're not representing them, you're there just as their slaves.
So nothing will, we'll just be collecting information and bringing it back to the board.
Correct.
Who in turn takes it to a hearing, the selectman, and then town meeting. So it's a process that's very big, it's not decided by a small amount of people.
So it might be that one member can't go, so you have two members, and sometimes, when you have at least two, you might hear something, Jim, but Pam might hear something different, and you can discuss these things. It's good to have more than one.
Do we need to have a vote on that? Are we good with that, Pam and I? Is that good?
You should probably have a motion.
Just a question, may others attend who are not part of the working group?
You can. What happens sometimes is then you start bumping into, this is how in the past, other board members come in to take a look, all of a sudden, there's a quorum. So just let us know if you attend to.
Isn't a quorum, with this board four?
It is four, yeah.
So you could have three people on this?
Absolutely. Well, I'd like to keep it open, the reason why I don't want to have three, because other, I like to open up for other boards, and other people to get involved. I'd like to keep it a smaller group, but everyone's welcome. We'll just have to make sure we never have four at the meeting. I think that, we won't be meeting as frequently as a local comprehensive plan. There'll be several, it's not going to be an every Wednesday type process.
And so we'd like to put this next meeting together probably sometime in June.
In June.
And then meet with the property owners, you know, it's good to have the summer people here a little bit.
Can, can we generate a list? I mean, that's a GIS, can someone draw a circle?
I don't push the buttons, but I know people who do.
You could ask, Bob Shea will do it for you, if you ask him. He's been very helpful with the EDIC, I asked him for a list, and he produced it in a couple of days, it was bang.
Bang, right.
So it's really, really easy to do. I know how to do it, but we should get him to do it.
Jim, are you just doing a butters, or a butters to a butters?
It's not like an a butters, it's really open to.
Anyone in the.
Property owners of the, yeah.
So they don't have to?
No.
Just come up to them?
We're going to draw a big circle and invite all these people until they can bring their friends.
Ooh, you look pretty.
Let's see how many people we get. We may think this is a great idea, we may have a meeting and no one shows up.
I hope not.
They'll show up.
Is this working group going to establish a scope of work and a schedule for these activities, or just going to be a meandering activity without any real end date?
It's a good question, I would probably bring back, first, Paul, bring the comments that we get from the stakeholders' meeting, bring it back to the board, and then talk about the next step with dates. And I think having benchmarks and dates are really important.
I can do it too.
So that we should, this, the planning board will put those in.
If it is the kind of thing that can go on indefinitely, unless there's.
Well, I don't have an indefinite amount of time, I have a full-time job, I try to make things happen fast, and I'm going to be pushing it to at least get the feedback as fast as we can. And I agree with you, benchmarks and dates are important, but those will be put on by the planning board.
Paul, you're such an engineer. You have that wonderful.
It's a good point.
You have, it's a, exactly, that's why you're wonderful.
Many times, you have a meeting, and it just goes on and on and on, and never seems to come to closure.
Like this one?
Exactly correct.
Stinger. Good.
Don't put that in the paper.
Okay, are we all set?
I'd like to move that Pam and Jim form the planning board segment of the Davis Straits working group.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You've already had discussion, so we're all set? Good.
This will be good to bring back to the LCP as well.
Well, that's where the idea came from originally anyways.
Exactly.
Zoning articles for November town meeting. We're only discussing one, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Now, in your, in your packages, you'll see, now that question two is passed here on the local ballot, state ballot, back in November approved the recreational use of marijuana in retail sale back marijuana, had an opt-out provision. So Falmouth, Falmouth has opted out. I believe there'll be a licensing or a local general bylaw. In my discussions with Attorney Duffy, he thinks it's a good idea, and I agree that there'd be a zoning bylaw. We'll probably go to school on a town of Westboro, and that's this article here. I just want to introduce this to the board and the public tonight. It doesn't preclude the medicinal marijuana, or marijuana not medically prescribed. Essentially, it gets into anyone who's a cultivator, or testing facility, or manufacturers, or retails, the marijuana. And we'll just change the word, the words Town of Westboro to Town of Falmouth, and bring it into town meeting. So that's what the electorate apparently wants. I'd like to actually hold a hearing on this this summer. You don't have to wait for the warrant to close, you can actually sort of, it's good for six months. So, let's see, if it's November 6th, so sometime around, sometime in July, I'd like to actually hold a hearing on this, one of your meetings. And then you're ready for the November town meeting, you don't have to even worry about the warrant closes, you hold the hearing, you have to have it ready for the warrant, blah, blah, blah. Because you sort of already know this is what the people voted, and this is what we're going to bring in. So I at least want you to be aware of it, so this is just a show for a hearing, what's this all about? It's essentially in reaction to the passage of question two on the ballot last week, and this is an example that's worked in the past. I owe the Westboro town planner, you know, lunch, he's a very good guy, good friend. And bring it up, and the public's knowledge too. So I'm not asking for the board to vote or anything like this, it's essentially a little homework, and a little, a little knowledge that's coming down the road here in about a month.
What does the word cultivators mean?
Basement growers.
Speaks for itself.
Does one, growing one plant make you a cultivator?
Well, all marijuana cultivators, my senses.
So that's what this is saying, this is, you can't have it anywhere.
No, unless it's, unless it is medically prescribed. Remember, the town did vote to have the humane use of marijuana, and only in business two districts, only pursuant to a special permit that this board may issue, and they are the cultivators.
Medical marijuana.
Medical marijuana. The town has voted not to allow the recreational use of marijuana. So if you're cultivating the plants, except for your personal medical use, because there is a medical exemption in the.
So this is.
Medical side.
This is not just getting rid of pot shops, it's getting rid of pot, period.
It's recreational use of marijuana.
Yeah, okay. Brian, are we clear what we got here?
This is.
Yep, that's exactly, except, except for marijuana.
Unless you have a prescription.
Unless, unless you actually, is that a prescription? You're part of that program.
That you can grow for medical.
Medical purposes, yeah.
But this was all in response, I think, because the state hasn't completed its ruling until 2018. And so I know that communities all over the Commonwealth have been very concerned and have opted out, because the state hasn't finished putting their rules and regs into, into.
Correct. And so that was part of the whole question, that came out in November, some towns, cities and towns are saying to themselves, you know.
Let's wait till the state finishes.
Let's wait till things get a little more settled.
When is this going to be on the agenda?
In about a month.
Wow.
So that's why I'm dropping it on your laps today.
It should be interesting.
All right. Remember, it's still a federal offense.
Yeah.
So this is just a local bylaw pursuant to a vote of the electorate.
So when Ali Fitzpatrick is a zoning enforcement officer, she'll be enforcing this?
Unless delegated to others.
She'll be going out looking, looking in basement windows.
Well, it'd be, it'd be a local bylaw in response to the vote of the electorate. At least in Town of Falmouth, recreational use of marijuana is not allowed.
Right now.
Right, correct. After this bylaw passes.
Right.
Right, right now, there's nothing against it. The question passed, oh, that's nice. But now we have to enact the question.
Okay.
Okay, so stand by, stand by for that. See you, come into a theory.
So, Brian, the purple folder with the general correspondence hasn't been around for a while. Do we, that means we haven't, it's just like three weeks in a row we've had.
I, do you get any?
No requests to be on the agenda from anybody, we're not missing anything?
Not from aware of, nothing's come to my attention.
All right, I'm just, my habit, whenever I see this, I quick look around for the purple folder, and I don't see it, that's all. Force of habit. Future agenda items.
This comes along with the recodification of the bylaw. We talk about parking an awful lot, and I really think we need to do something about parking. And not to the extent that we're creating more. The talk about putting a parking garage down behind Penguin Park is ridiculous, I think we have acres of pavement at the schools here. We want to try and encourage public transportation, so building more parking, you'll only create more congestion, you're not going to solve anything by creating parking. Being on 128 last week, when I, it used to be two lanes on either side, now it's four lanes, I don't get there any faster. So building more parking isn't going to be the answer to solving the parking issue. Copenhagen has reduced parking in the city by 2% every year. And what it's done is it's forced people to take public transportation or ride your bike. And that's part of our transportation element, we want to encourage public transportation. And you're not going to do that if you keep creating places for people to park. We can do something with the existing parking at the schools, whether it's a jitney or shuttle or something that we incorporate. And also the amount of parking at businesses and other establishments, we need to reduce that. We, I don't know how many times you drive by someplace, and very seldom do you ever see a parking lot that's full. So I think we need to establish more of the sharing of parking, like we have in business redevelopment. So I'd really like to look at the nitty-gritty pieces of our bylaws that require X amount of parking for X amount of square feet, and do some changes to that. So I'd like to see that. I'd also like to see a Davisville intersection Cape Cod Commission study as well.
You didn't bring that up, I was going to.
I really want, that's something that is waiting, I'd like to get something going on that before. on that before that passes us by and we can't do anything about it.
I think what's equally as important is Woods Hole or Davis Straits. It's kind of been ignored.
Yeah.
So I know we're not going to have it. These other two things have already got things moving, but I'd like to have it come right behind if we can.
Reset for Davisville.
Would you explain that, about what you're looking for for Davisville?
The same vision plan we're talking about with the Woods Hole type thing or the Davis Straits. We go to the Cape Cod Commission. We have them take a look at what we have there and show us what it's going to, what it should look like in 50 years. Then we have outreach to all the people who live there, the property owners, the same process. But I think, well, it's been kind of ignored for a while, so I think it's something we really should get after.
They have very active community associations.
They do, and we should be, they should be jumping, we should be reaching out to them and get a champion. I think we need, every, every good article needs a champion to get it through. And I think we'll have to get a champion to, and then that person really works it. But we'll work on getting a champion out of that group.
And then just one more thing. This actually could come out of the, an action item of the LCP would be municipal land use master plan. I would really like us to study that, look at that, and look at what the town has for property, what our future needs are going to be, and where we will end up putting things. If we're looking at coastal resiliency and retreat, or if we're looking at expanding the police department, or we need another fire station, you know, these are things we shouldn't take seven to 10 years to decide where to put a senior center. That should be something that we've got in the works. And granted, people say that long-term plans do change, but I'd like to have something. You know, we've got the water plant now. We've got the old water building. What do we do with that? We've got other properties. Is the golf course going to sustain itself forever? You know, these are things we need to think about.
We've got the Augusta property we bought from my use, and it's just sitting there and doing anything.
We have 90 acres out of the high school. I mean, the town I grew up in is at 90 acres. So, you know, I think we really need to take a look at that because having sat on that senior center site selection committee for the number of years I did and see the result just defied logic to me. And I'd like to see a master plan for municipal property.
Mr. Chairman?
Going along with that, I would also like to explore what I mentioned before that other communities have done in getting a right of first refusal on properties that are in ownership of maybe some seniors or really way behind in their taxes to see if the town can have a right of first refusal on a property when it becomes available. Either they can vote for it CPC money or whatever, but it's a great way, if you need extra parking or if you need a space to park buses or you need agricultural land, whatever it is, it's a, it's a wonderful way. And I said, many communities have already adopted that. They look at a, an overview of the community and see what properties could be available if they're contiguous to our open space, conservation land, you know, whatever it might be. But it's used pretty frequently, and I'd like to see us do that. And I'd also like to see us really explore shuttle services. And I, and this is just off the top of my head because I don't know if this could work, but could somebody ever park and take advantage of the Woods Hole shuttle to go someplace? Could there be an extra stop, for example? Or, we have those shuttles that go back and forward.
Those steamship.
Those steamship. I can tell you, in the summertime, I ride the Wush all the time to Woods Hole, and it comes every half hour. And I'll watch 10 white buses go by empty, and then I'll see the one I want. It's a shuttle bus. They don't pick you up. It's a state operation. We have nothing to do with them.
Well, then I think we may, we should start looking at a shuttle service for ourselves.
Well, it's kind of what Bob was suggesting, that we need to have a way to shuttle people around our parking. We actually really need a transportation board. And that's what a lot of what we're hearing is we have a transportation board. It failed, didn't fail, it just withered up and went away. When we kind of own that responsibility, anybody want to take on that one? We really don't have, no one's working on that at all. Are they, Brian? That's just sitting there.
The Transportation Management Commission, that's what it's called, was actually the idea of the local planning committee back in the 90s. And they simply, you know, everything falls towards entropy unless you put energy into it. And bright lights sometimes fail quickly. So it's a marathon, not a sprint.
Right.
And everything goes in cycles. So my sense is eventually that will cycle back.
Right.
The Wush started with a little 20-seat Eldorado in 1992.
Well, if any member really feels charged up and wants to start working on that, that's something, because no one's really working on it.
But actually, you can, you can flag down the Wush anywhere.
Right, they do. I love it. I ride it all the time. But it only runs for a couple of months during the summer, and it's.
Expensive.
I know it's expensive, yeah.
All right, so parking bylaw, Davisville reset, and we do have a 2007 municipal land study. It's 10 years old now, so I guess we can resurrect that.
Did you repeat that?
We did something like this in 2007. We had some vacant land. We came up with some recommendations for affordable housing, the Hatchville Station. So we can revisit that. Anything else?
Next meeting?
June 6th. We'll have some subdivision work to do and hopefully we can discuss some of these other items that you discussed.
And make a motion we adjourn.
We got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.